Okay, I am recording and I am uh live, hopefully everybody can hear me and see me. And see the screen. It doesn't really matter if you see me or not, but hopefully you can see the screen. Um, and yeah, okay, so I also have a formula sheet in front of me, but it's like a handwritten one. Um, I guess I can like, I can put a picture or something like that online if people want to see that, but uh it's, it's mostly just the uh calculus stuff like the DX DY DZ, but in the other coordinate systems. And then the gradient divergence in other coordinate systems. That's mostly what it on that sheet. Um, but yeah. Okay, so I want to just do, like unless anybody has any other suggestions, I would like to just do these, start with just doing these three questions. Or maybe actually I'll start with a different question. I'll start with one of the questions that he said earlier. That would be probably on it. Or at least he said something very similar to this would be on it or whatever, something like this. So that would be this. So let's start with that. Find the, the field and flux density, field and flux density from potential. So we are given the potential field or the potential function. And we want to get the electric field from it, right? Determine the electric field intensity vector E and the volume charge density rho V. Due to the following electric potentials, blah, 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 blah. So yeah, I mean, basically it's written here already what you have to do. So we're given V, right? Uh, we want to find E. So E is of course the negative gradient of V, right? Uh, so immediately that's how we find E. Uh, and then uh, if we want to find uh rho V, rho V is the divergence of the flux density, which is equal to epsilon naught times the divergence of the electric field. Um, which is equal to epsilon naught times the divergence of the negative gradient of V. Long, long way to write it, but anyways, that's basically what we're doing. But first we'll find the E vector. And then we'll just find the divergence of it. So for part A, it's, it's easy because it's in uh, so for all these questions, first is find E. And, and then the second part is find rho V, right? So to start part one, uh, right, we just, we just, E is just the negative gradient of V. By the way, if any questions, you can of course type in the chat or unmute and whatever. Everybody can do whatever. Um, so, or just message me, private message, do that. So anyways, uh, yeah, here, uh, again, we're, we are given the, 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 the potential function. We want to find E, so we do it like this. Um, so basically for Cartesian, the gradient is just um partial X or sorry, partial V, partial X, ax plus partial V, partial Y, ay plus partial V, partial Z, az, right? Um, you just take the partial derivative in every direction and that's each component of the vector. So the X component is the partial derivative in the X direction and so forth. So partial derivative with respect to X is 2 X Y Z. So we have 2 X Y Z, ax plus partial derivative with respect to Y is X squared Z. Where it said, ay, y. And partial derivative with respect to Y is X squared Y. And then you just have to put your unit vectors on the end. There you go. Uh, sorry, and negative of this. I forgot to put negative. So just, I'll make them all negative. Just there. Um, it just, the negative sign, I forgot. Um, and yeah, so there we go. That's basically the electric field. So we already found the electric field for the first one. And then for uh, the uh, rho V, so you gotta find, that's the second part of the question, right? It's find rho V. Rho V, we need to now find the um, uh, basically, we need to find the divergence of this, right? So, so rho V, like I said before, is the divergence of D, which is equal to the divergence of epsilon naught E, which is equal to epsilon naught times, times like multiplication, the divergence of E. The divergence of E is not that hard to figure out, right? So like in Cartesian coordinates, like XYZ, it's not too hard to figure out. Um, yes, new background. I, I live in a new apartment. That's why it's a new background. So, yeah. Um, so uh, the divergence of E is you just take the partial derivative with respect to each component and then add it all together. So you take the partial, uh, partial derivative with respect to X, uh, partial you, you take the first component. Yeah. How do I phrase it? You take the partial derivative with respect to X of the X component. And then you take the partial derivative with respect to Y of the Y component. And you take the partial derivative with respect to Z of the Z component. And yeah, so this is just for Cartesian. For the other coordinate systems, there's formulas you use and it's kind of extends this to those, those ones, but um, for now, that's all we really care about. So anyways, uh, partial derivative with respect to X of EX, well, partial derivative of this guy, which is EX. Well, that would be negative 2 Y Z, cause it's just a constant times X. So negative 2 Y Z, right? Um, sorry, and yeah, I I have to multiply this by epsilon naught. Always forget that I have some constant. I have to multiply this by epsilon. Anyways. Cause epsilon naught times that I've So anyways, uh, negative 2 Y Z, no ax though, because we're, we, uh, we just take the X component there like that, right? Partial derivative with respect to Y of the Y component, zero. Partial derivative with respect to Z of the Z component, zero. So our final answer for the rho V is uh, negative 2, negative 2 epsilon naught Y Z. I hopefully that's the answer he got. It must be. This was not that hard. This particular is not that I think probably lecture lecture four, I don't know. Yeah. Lecture four. Oh no, lecture four is yeah, 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 it's probably like negative 2 epsilon, well, epsilon naught Y Z, yeah, perfect. There you go. Okay, so for part B, like the point of what I'm doing these questions is just because he said this would be like, probably something like this would be on it. And also like, it's good to just review, how do you do these operators in different coordinate system? So for part B, we have a different function, right? We have the different potential function, which is in cylindrical. Um, so that's that. And again, we need to find, first, we need to find the uh, electric field. And then second, we need to find the uh, charge density. So um yeah, we are allowed to make our own formulas. He said single sided and written. Or I think I, if I understood correctly, he also said you could write it with a tablet and then print it. I think that's fine, but anyways. Like you can write it digitally and then print it to be a physical thing, but yeah. So the, the formulas are the same. I mean, still, if we know V, right? So epsilon, uh, the electric field is just negative of the gradient of V. Uh, but finding this gradient is different in different court, coordinates, right? So this is now in cylindrical. Uh, vertical, and I know it's in cylindrical because, because of the symbols that are being used, but rho is the um, the radial radius distance, radial distance that you're going. Um, if it was in, if it was in a spherical, you'd use R, and then Z is only in cylindrical. So we're in cylindrical for sure. So now I need the negative gradient. So what's the formula for the gradient? I don't remember. That's why I write it on a formula sheet. So it's partial V, partial rho, a rho. So far, same as Cartesian, then it changes. Actually, this is pretty much the same. It's just one over rho. Partial V, partial phi, a phi. And then this is partial V, partial Z, az. So it's basically like what you'd expect from Cartesian, but the only difference is this term just has a one over rho. Um, why? I don't know. It's some technicality of being in this different coordinate system. For it to have the same meaning of the divergence, you just need to have that there for it to work out the same way as Cartesian divergence works out. Yeah, I, I don't know the details about that, but anyways, we're allowed to just write down the formula, so we will. Um, so now we just need uh, negative negative, and then we have partial derivative V with respect to rho, right? So with respect to rho, it would be uh, well phi, Z over rho. A rho. Derivative of lawn rho is one over rho. Um, but with respect to rho, plus one over rho. Um, derivative of V with respect to phi is Z lawn rho. Uh, a phi. Yeah, and then Z, yeah, blah, blah, blah. So partial derivative of Z with respect to, bleh, gives me another thing. Partial derivative of V with respect to Z is phi lawn rho. A Z. And we take the negative of this just because it's uh, that's the formula for the electric field. Um, and so, yeah, so then now I could multiply the negative in. I guess I just put the negative in like, hey, that's, that's, there you go. That's our electric field. Could you simplify that? No, probably not. I don't, we can't simplify that. There you go. That's, that's as far as uh, great. So now that we know that. Anyways, anything? I actually didn't hear anything, so. Um, uh, hopefully I can, if people talk, I can hear them. I don't know. Audio down. Um, okay, so let's uh, let's keep going. So, so that's the electric field. Now uh, by rho V is equal to epsilon naught times the divergence of E. Right? We've been through how to derive that. So this is epsilon naught uh, times, well, what we have here is the um, is the divergence of uh, cylindrically defined vector field. So this is the formula, one over rho, partial, partial rho of rho E rho. So E rho is the rho component of E. Um, uh, plus one over rho. Rho, uh, partial derivative uh, with respect to phi of D phi plus partial, partial Z, EZ. That's the formula. You just memorize that or write it down on your piece of paper. Um, so now we just go ahead and actually do that. So one over rho. Now we want to take the partial derivative with respect to rho of rho E rho. So E rho is negative phi Z. So rho E rho is just negative phi Z. So I'm just gonna say, this is negative phi Z plus one over rho. Let's actually do the partial derivatives here. So I'll, I'll just copy down. So it's not too confusing. Um, so now, epsilon naught, cause the rest of them, you don't have to actually multiply anything in there. Just just that. So uh, well, okay, partial derivative of this with respect to phi, bye bye. Partial derivative of uh, D phi with respect to phi, bye bye, zero. Partial derivative of the last one with respect to Z, I also got zero. That doesn't make sense. What happened? I got zero for all of them? Oh yeah, sorry, the middle, oh no, that's also right. Did he get zero? I don't remember if he got zero. Oh, he got zero. Yeah, he got zero. There you go. So the answer is zero. How's that possible? You have a potential function, but zero volume density everywhere? I don't know. The math works out. Say, I mean, it's right. There's no issue with math, just uh weird, like how, I don't understand how you can have a potential function, like a electric potential everywhere. But also at the same time have zero charge density everywhere. Like that means you have no charges, isn't it? I don't, probably not. I don't know. Maybe I'm confused about something, but anyways, the math works out, so. It's okay. Um, part C is uh, same thing, but now we're in spherical, right? So just practicing using the different formulas. I know we're in spherical because of the use of an R. R is the radial distance for spherical. Once again, we want to find E. We find E by doing the negative gradient of V. So we want the negative. And the gradient of V, well, that is partial V, partial R, AR plus one over R, partial V, partial theta, a theta, plus one over R sine theta. Um, partial V, partial V, R shall be, partial phi, a phi. There you go. So again, this, how did I know that? The formula. That's how I knew that. Um, so yeah, then partial V, partial R is um, something negative, negative sine by over R squared. Did I do that right? Apparently it means that there's an equal number of opposite charges for a charge density to be zero. Oh, okay. There are charges, but the density is zero because because uh, like equal, yeah, okay. Think that that's explanation F. Um, so then yeah, one over R, partial V, partial theta is zero. This term is zero. Um, and then one over R sine theta. A partial V, partial theta is one over R. Uh, derivative of sine, sorry, phi, I mean, so partial V, partial phi is um, one over R if I'm from this. This turns into this. And then derivative of sine phi with respect to phi is just cos phi. Um, a phi. Perfect. Uh, did I uh? Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Did I do this derivative right? The derivative of one over, of one over R is negative one over R squared, right? Or what? R to the negative one, negative one, R to the negative two. Yeah, okay. Um, so then here I have sine phi, phi, not theta, right? Phi over R squared, AR minus one, uh, minus cos phi over R squared sine theta. A phi. Check that that's right. Uh, so yeah. Cool, yeah, that's right. So that's our E field. Then to find rho V, once again, we just need to do epsilon naught times the divergence of the E field. The divergence of the E field can be written as divergence of the E field can be written as um, with, with the spherical coordinates, one over R squared, partial, partial R of R squared DR plus one over R sine phi partial, partial theta. Sorry, that's supposed to be a, I said phi, but I meant theta. There's a theta there, theta there. Sin theta D uh, theta. Boom. Great. Now we do that. So epsilon naught times, well, um, I'll just write it like this, one over R squared, partial, partial R. R squared times DR, so the R component. So this is just sine phi, right? Oh, it's gonna end up being zero, but whatever. One over R sine I'm missing a term. What happened? Yes, I'm missing a term. There are definitely supposed to be three terms. Plus cause also on my sheet, I wrote it exactly how I'm gonna write it here, like two here and then one on the bottom. I missed that. Better not do that on the test. One over R sine theta partial, partial phi E phi. That's the formula. Um, so this is now, um, okay, so uh we need the, that's the phi, the uh, D theta is zero, right? So D theta, since D theta is zero, uh, this whole thing is zero. So we don't have to actually account for that at all. Uh, now uh, yeah, okay, so it's, and then the one over R sine theta. Uh, partial derivative of D theta, uh, D phi with respect to phi um, is gonna be derivative, cosine is negative sine, so it's going to be, um, I got the signs right there, right? Yeah. So it's going to be sine phi, positive sine phi over R squared sine theta, right? So sine phi over R squared sine sine phi over R squared sine theta. Uh, yeah, and these are scalars, right? There's no vectors here anymore. That's it. There we go. Oh, sorry. I have to just take the derivative. Epsilon naught, one over R squared, derivative of sine is cosine, so cosine, sorry, with respect to R is zero. My entire answer is uh, epsilon naught times sine phi, phi over R cubed sine squared theta. Epsilon naught sine phi over R cubed sine squared theta. Yep, there we go. Okay, so there is that question done. Basically, the point of that question was just to um, try out all the different formulas for divergence and gradient. So there we go. We used all six. All the, all the three for gradient and the three for diver. Um, I'll open up the chat, see if anybody's saying anything now. Okay, so if anybody has any questions, feel free to let me know. I'm happy to explain anything. By the way, if you don't know, on Tuesday, 6:08, I will be doing an MTH 514 tutorial as well, so feel free to attend that. But that'll be on Zoom. That's with uh, that's with res or less or muse or whatever. So uh, okay, so I'm opening up the next question here. Uh, the next one I got is we'll do the, the actual midterm review questions that he did. Like, just because it's good to try it again, especially if we know that these are the questions that are gonna be on there. But also, uh, you know, if people want another person explaining it, then I will explain it. I'm going to try to take a screenshot with as little of his additional help as possible, because he kind of wrote on it. But anyways, this is the, the first question. Um, so let's give it a try. We have a potential field. So V, which is written in cylindrical. Let me actually do something quickly with the pen. Kind of try to fix something on the pad. Anyways, we have a potential field. V is rho sine phi plus rho Z squared. We need to find E. We need to find rho V. You basically already, like, we did that already, like. I didn't really have to do it three times, but we'll just do it quickly. Um, I can't, I can't do what I was trying to do with the pencil. That's done. Um, and then we gotta find the total charge within some region. Uh, which is, we'll see how to do that. And we need to find the energy density WE or omega E or whatever. Uh, and then the equip potential lines for that and that, and then the work done to move one coulomb of charge between two points. So let's give it a try. Um, so V is rho sine phi plus rho Z squared. Um, so that's a square there. So uh, part A is to find E. E, of course, is the negative gradient of V. We've already been through this, negative. Uh, gradient of V in cylindrical is partial V, partial phi, a phi, E phi plus one over phi, partial V, partial theta, a theta. Uh, phi, not theta, plus partial V, partial Z, a Z. Uh, so let's do it. This is um, partial derivative of V with respect to phi, uh, with respect to rho is sine phi plus Z squared, right? So sine phi plus Z squared. A rho plus one over rho, partial derivative of V with respect to phi is just going to be um, so this is a constant term for that, and then it's just going to be rho cosine phi. Rho cosine phi, a phi. Partial derivative, derivative of V with respect to Z is gonna be two rho Z and then AZ there. That's our, that's our field. That's our electric field. Uh, we can simplify it a little bit. So the electric field is negative sine, I'll just put the bracket there, negative sine phi plus Z squared, a phi, plus, uh, minus cosine phi, cause the rows cancel. A phi minus two rho Z, a Z. Great, that's our field vector. So that's for, that's for E. Um, that's for A, I mean. So negative sine phi Z squared, negative cosine phi minus two Z phi, yep. Uh, part B, we've already done this, right? So part B is the rho, rho V. So rho V is epsilon naught times the divergence of the electric field, which is going to be epsilon naught times, well, the divergence, the divergence formula is one over rho, partial, partial rho of rho D rho plus one over rho partial, partial phi, D phi. And then it's partial, partial Z of D Z. Yeah, there you go. So uh, plugging everything into this formula, let's do it. Epsilon naught is the constant term. And then we have one over rho. Now I'm gonna take the partial derivative with respect to rho of rho D rho. Well, what's rho D rho? Rho D rho is rho, well, negative rho sine phi plus rho or I'm putting a bracket there, plus Z squared. All right, the neg, yeah, there you go, it's fine. Close, close that bracket, plus one over, uh, just copy. All this will stay. Um, great. So now let's actually start evaluating these uh, these uh, partial derivatives. So this is one over rho. Partial, partial rho of all this stuff. Well, I mean, that, that has nothing to do with rho, so it's just a constant. So this is just negatives times negative sine phi or neg, there, that's there, sine phi uh, plus Z squared. There, or maybe like I don't have enough brackets. That's what I'm trying to write. Um, plus one over rho, partial derivative of D phi with respect to phi. Uh, well, that's not too bad, right? So it's gonna be one over rho. Partial derivative of negative cosine phi with respect to phi is going to be sine phi. Right? Cause the negative and the negative are gonna cancel. Partial derivative of Z with respect to Z is just minus two. Uh, good. That's fine. Uh, yeah, and then that gets like that. So we can simplify a little bit here, right? This is gonna be epsilon naught times, well, it's gonna be negative sine phi or negative one over rho sine phi. That should be, it's supposed to be a phi, not a theta, but uh, minus one over rho Z squared plus one over rho sine phi minus two rho. These two terms cancel. And then we get epsilon naught is, or I mean, sorry, rho V is epsilon naught times this, whatever. So epsilon naught, uh, I don't know. Actually, I write this. I just, I'll just write it like how we have it basically. Negative one over rho, Z squared minus two rho. That's where, yeah, there you go. Okay, so that's rho V. Um, if anybody has any questions, no. Um, so now let's find uh the next part, which is more interesting. So part C is the total charge Q within some region. Uh, so that region, I cut it off by accident. The region is from uh, zero, zero to one. So the region for part C is phi sorry, rho goes from zero to one, uh, phi goes from zero to two pi. And Z goes from negative one to one. Uh, so we want uh, total charge Q within this region. Well, total charge Q is just the volume integral of rho V DV. Um, so let's do that. That's, that's it. That's the whole thing. So uh, volume integral though, in cylindrical, is that where we're in? Cylindrical? Cylindrical. So uh, looks like this. So it's a triple integral, right? Rho V, we just discussed is epsilon naught, negative one over rho, Z squared minus two rho. And then DV, DV for cylindrical is um, rho D rho, D phi, D Z. Right? How did I know that? Basically what I do to kind of keep track of all that is I have this. So for, for Cartesian, I, J, K. See, this is a note on the side here. Uh, I, J, K, which is the Cartesian coordinates, uh, the the differential blank the differential blanks are dy, dx, dy, dz, that one's easy. For cylindrical, we have, these are our directions, that's just my notation for the directions. And the differential elements are d rho, rho d phi, and dz. And then finally, for cylindrical, it's r hat, theta hat, i hat. I could call that a something, but whatever, that's just how I wrote it. D, so the differential elements are dr, rd theta, r sine theta, d theta. So, I am in cylindrical, so I wanna multiply these three together, cuz I'm, sorry, I'm in cylindrical and I'm doing a volume integral, dv is the product of all these things. DS is just the product of two of them, whichever two, whichever two, like, d somethings are not zero, in the direction of the third one. And then, just a single one is just a single one, but anyway, so yeah, when you're doing a volume integral, you multiply them all together, so altogether would be rho d phi, rho d rho d phi dz, rho d rho d phi. And our bounds, well, our bounds are very simple, they're just, it's just what's in the question. Rho goes from zero to one, phi goes from zero to two pi, Z goes from negative one to one. So, yeah, so let's, let's solve this integral, but down here. So, now, well, we can take epsilon naught out, right, so epsilon naught can come out, and then we kind of have a what's it called, like a sum here, so we can just treat it as two separate integrals. How did he do it, did he do it like a trickier, like a more clever way, or did he just separate it into two? No, I guess you don't have to separate it into two integrals, yeah, he didn't, so I just want a minimal amount of writing, is what I wanna do. So, doesn't matter, you separate it or not. I guess I won't, this is negative one over, I gotta go, this is negative Z squared over rho, minus two rho, I'll take a negative out. It's gonna be plus now, and then we're gonna multiply this by rho, so, so, yeah, I'll, I'll do another step though, so. We have rho, d rho, e phi, ez. And now, in this step, I just, I don't wanna write everything again, so I'm just gonna copy and paste it. We're gonna multiply in this rho, right, so this is gonna go away, this is gonna be Z squared here, and it's gonna be rho squared, so, that's just multiplying this rho in. So now, you just integrate with respect to these parameters. These, these, these values, epsilon naught, or negative epsilon naught. Integral with respect to rho, there's something there, right, so this is going to be integral from negative one to one, integral from zero to two pi of, well, the integral of this with respect to rho, this is gonna be Z squared rho, plus two thirds rho cubed, evaluated from zero to one, really just at one. D phi, d Z. This is gonna be negative epsilon naught, integral from negative one, one of the integral from zero to two pi of, at one's gonna be Z squared plus two thirds. E phi, ez. This is now just Z squared plus two over three is a constant with respect to, with respect to phi, right, so it can just be taken out. Negative epsilon naught, integral negative one to one of Z squared plus two thirds, integral zero to two pi, d phi, ez. This is just two pi. I'm just gonna take that to the front, so negative two pi, epsilon naught, so just to be clear, what happened to that integral, it turned into just the two pi in the front here. And this is integral negative one to one, Z squared plus two thirds ez, and now this is not too bad, right? A normal integral, Z cubed over three, plus two thirds Z, evaluated from negative one to one. We get negative two pi epsilon naught, evaluated at one, we get one over three, plus two thirds, minus, evaluated at negative one, we get negative a third, and then minus two thirds. And whatever, this is negative two epsilon naught, one third plus two thirds plus one third plus two thirds, which is just two, right? So, this is just negative four pi epsilon. Oh, I lost an over three? How did I lose an over three? I lost something. I made some mistake, what did I make, what mistake did I make? This, this is cuz he got, he got this over three. How did that happen? Gonna look at the solution. So, he had that too, right? Negative, well, he didn't take the negative out, but anyway, he had basically this written, right? Two pi epsilon naught, negative for me, right? This right here, and then Z squared, two over three, which is just negative Z cubed over three. Minus two over three Z, evaluated from one to, negative one to one, makes sense, that is correct. He took the negative out. He just took the negative, that's all he did, that's it, I think. Yeah, he took the negative out. But two, one third so he took the one third out. So he got plus two Z, evaluating this at one, you get one plus two, minus negative one, minus two. So this should be plus two. Be one, you got one plus two, minus negative one, minus two. One plus two plus one plus two, which is six, so he should have gotten negative twelve pi epsilon naught over three, which is four, negative four pi epsilon naught, I think he made a mistake. That is, that is, this should be a plus here, unless I'm wrong, I think that should be a plus there. Right, hopefully I'm right, minus, if I ever did the negative one, Z cubed, negative one cubed, negative one, two Z is negative two, you're subtracting that, so yeah, that should be a plus there. That should be a six, I'm pretty sure I'm right, pretty sure I'm right, so there is a mistake in the solution. Hopefully I'm right. So, yeah, that's my little thing here. But this would not, there would be no over three, okay, perfect. That's, that's that question done, I mean, that's not the whole question, but that's, you know, that's the total charge within that region, good to know. Omega E, right, work, energy density. Right, so for this, we use the formula, which I forget now, but whatever, I'll just write it down, I don't even have it actually on the formula sheet yet, but I will soon. Oh, yeah, as usual, my notes are available, you can click my notes. On my website, so here's energy density, omega E is however we wanna write it, but I'll write it like this, one half epsilon naught E squared. That's one half epsilon naught magnitude of the electric field squared. So, that's like the energy density, energy per unit volume. So, epsilon naught over two, E, we already determined E, E is this, so we want the magnitude of this squared. So, it's really just each individual component squared, yeah. Does he even simplify? No, he doesn't even simplify. Or does he? He doesn't simplify, so he basically, it's just using this formula, honestly. So, the electric field was this, so I just, I just have to get a screenshot of it, cuz I don't remember. But that was the electric field, so that means that the magnitude of it squared is going to be, well, sine phi plus Z squared squared plus cosine squared phi plus two rho Z squared. That's it. Oh, how do you get four? Oh, cuz he just squared two. That's it, that's, that's all you need to do for that question, cuz like, simplifying this is not very possible, maybe. You could very, very slightly simplify it, but not very much, cuz sine squared, sine squared phi and cosine squared phi can combine into one, you foil this, but whatever, not really relevant. I'll just put this here, like, it's a, you know, it's a memory from the past. That's E, that's part E. Let's look at, so that's part D. Part E is equip potential line for phi equals zero, V equals sixty-four. So, phi equals zero degrees, V equals sixty-four. So, we wanna draw equi, I don't wanna spell it, EQ line. So, we do this by taking the, the potential function, there's our potential function. There's our potential function, so we set, what we, we have what there, so sixty-four equals sine zero is zero, so this is just rho z squared. So, this is a function with two variables equal to sixty-four, so this is going to be some sort of curve. It's going to be a curve on the, like, on the like, X Y, X Z plane. Right, because remember, I'm gonna draw it like that. Straight line, straight line, closer. X Z, I know this because Z is one of our variables, but how do I know the other axis is X? Well, remember, rho, rho begins on the X axis, right, so that's, that's it, rho begins on the X axis, always. So, it's going to be a plot on the X Y plane. So, our rho kind of acts like X here, not just kind of, it like, very much acts like X here, cuz phi is zero, so if phi is zero, phi is the measurement from the X axis towards the Y axis, but phi is zero, so that means our rho direction is directly along the X axis, that's a better way of explaining, so. Let me write that here. Right, so I know it's the X axis because phi equals zero, whoop, that's not what I meant, phi equals zero. And so, and this is the angle, this is the, and this means X axis for A. So, yeah, at this point, it's just sort of plugging things in, right, so I would say sixty-four over Z squared equals rho, and then you can just start choosing Z values, so I would say, or, yeah, I'm, yeah, I start choosing Z values, these are gonna be some points, rho Z. So, I'll choose Z to be, whatever, one, so if that's one, then this is sixty-four, one squared, sixty-four divided by one. If this is two, then this is sixty-four divided by four, which is sixteen. And if this is three then, yeah, if this is three, then sixty-four divided by nine, not easy, so I'll do four, sixty-four divided by sixteen is four. And we can try some more, like eight, it's eight squared is sixty-four, so this is gonna be one. Does that make sense? Yeah, that does make sense. And then, you know, we could keep going, but that's enough points, so sixty-four, one, sixteen, two, four, four, one, eight. You know, approximately like this. Now, this solution has a, like a bottom part, too. Kind of weird, I guess it's because of how I did this. So, if I rearrange this, yeah, 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 yeah. Like, how would you have known, okay, anyways, like I didn't really write this equation very nicely, so if I, you know, Z is our, our Y variable, so I'm gonna rearrange for that, so it's going to be, instead it's going to be sixty-four over rho equals Z squared. Or in other words, Z equals plus or minus, this, well, eight over root rho. Right? So, there we go, but Z equals the positive eight over root rho, root rho. Root rho, and negative eight over root rho. So, that's why you'd have the, you'd have the identical on the bottom. Right, you could go ahead and do some more points with this, but you'll just find that it's the identical graph, but just flipped over the Y axis or the X axis. Okay, so that's equip potential line for that. Then, work done to move one Coulomb of charge from A to B. Let's see, work done to move one Coulomb of charge from A to B. So, this is F, I guess, it was E, F, yeah, F. Forgot my alphabet there for a second. So, work done between these two points, there's a bunch of ways you can do this, but the work done, you can also write as QVA minus VB, or do I have that backwards, I forget. The VB minus VA? Where did I put it? VB minus VA. Is that how he did it, or did he do it? Or maybe, no, you can do it like this. Yeah, that's how he did it, okay. So, so, yeah, so then Q is one, Q was given as one Coulomb, right, one Coulomb. And then we just need our potential function to, like, our electric potential function, to find these things, right? We also need to know what A and B are, so VB is just going to be, well, rho is five, sine zero plus five times two squared, right, which is zero plus twenty, is of course twenty. So, this is going to be twenty minus VA, VA is four times sine of pi by two plus four times zero squared, which is of course just four times one plus zero, which is just four. Sine pi over two is one, so this is sixteen joules. Perfect, first question done, well, second question really, but, you know, first question from the actual midterm review. I'll just keep going, if anybody has any questions.
I got a question.
Otherwise, I will keep working.
Hello?
And then, yeah, once I've done these three, you have other suggestions, we can do other suggestions, or we could just be done.
Hello? Might be doesn't.
So, let me just, uh there we go, let's just start with it, so, a uniform, so it doesn't say uniform, but I, you know, we assume it's uniform, so a uniform volume density or charge density, which we don't know, is distributed on a sphere of radius three, so just say rad equals three. Use Gauss's law to find the, the flux density vector, at r is greater than, r is less than three and r is greater than three, so, okay, so we have a sphere of charge, right? Which has a radius of three, right, r, I'll drop it here. We have a sphere of charge centered at the origin, which has a radius of three. And we wanna use Gauss's law to find the flux, and flux density vector, so let's start with r is less than three, right, r is less than three. From here, we'll draw the Gaussian surface, Gaussian surf. So, that would look like this, right, maybe I'll just broaden that color, r is less than three. And so, the Gauss's law tells us that the integral, the surface integral of the flux density ds integral, the surface integral of the flux density d S, right? Yes, is equal to Q enclosed, right? Uh, Q enclosed is the uh, volume integral of rho V d V. So yeah, that's it basically. Um, so uh, working this out, this is for a sphere, for a sphere, this is always gonna end up being d r, uh, not vector, d r times four pi four pi r squared, right? That's what it is for pi r, r cubed, right? Sorry. Did I do that wrong? No. Yeah, four pi r squared, that's right. Um, but let's try to figure out why. I, I can probably do it. Let's see. The first, but for a sphere, it'll always end up being that. Like, if your Gaussian surface is a sphere, um, but the reason it's that is, well, d S, what's d S? We are in um, uh, I guess spherical coordinate systems, right? So spherical coordinate systems, if I go back up here, right? Well, what's varying on the surface, right? On the surface here? Well, r is staying constant on the Gaussian surface, but the other two are varying, right? So we look back here, we're in um, here. So we have the, these two are in effect. Right? So if I go back here, right, that means that d S equals the product of these two, but it's in the r direction, A r direction. Right? That's the d S vector. So d S equals um, r squared sine theta d theta. Oop, d theta d theta? That doesn't make sense. I wrote something wrong here. This is supposed to be a, this was be a theta, and this is supposed to be a phi. This was be a phi. Um, this, this is supposed to, d, this is a, well, whatever, theta, and this is d phi. A r. So now let's substitute that in. It's the surface integral, circulation integral of d dot. All we have is this, r squared sine phi d theta d phi A r. Right? Well, this is just the r compo, the dot product between this vector and this vector. It's like you have zero A phi or A theta plus zero A phi, right? So the dot product, well, it's only gonna, from this one, it's just gonna take out the um, it's just gonna take out the uh, r component, right? The, yeah, the r components. It's gonna be d r times r squared sine phi d theta d, d theta d phi. No more vector anymore, because it's a we've taken the dot product, so scalar product. Uh, theta goes from zero to two pi, phi goes from zero to pi. Uh, so hopefully, we get, or expecting. So d r, r squared can come out, integral zero to pi of uh, which is for, which is for theta. Sorry, they theta. I have to remember what I'm doing. Theta goes from zero to pi. Phi goes from zero to two pi. So uh, what's left inside? Sin theta, double integral. So uh, double integral, uh, d theta d phi. Uh, so theta goes from zero to pi, phi goes from zero to two pi. This is d r r squared. Blah, blah, blah. So you just solve the integral now. So sine uh, zero to two pi, we can just do like this, zero to two pi, d phi, integral zero to pi. I have this right. Phi, theta is the angle from the z axis. Hopefully I have that right. Oh yeah, I don't think, yes, I can't, I can't hear you. Am I deafened? I'm not deafened.
Hello? Can you hear us?
Yeah, one second.
Hello?
Oh, you know what? Say something?
Hello?
Yeah, it's going into the recording. That's interesting. Um, why can't I hear? I don't know.
Maybe you might need to change your.
Turn off my headphones, turn them off. My, my headphones doing something? Maybe now?
Hello?
Yeah, I can hear you now. There you go. Good. Perfect. Thank you for solving that. Was someone trying to ask me a question?
Yeah, I did have a question on the, for the previous question.
Go for it.
Um, it just, uh, could you just walk me through the process that you took to solve for the equipotential lines?
Equupotential, like these guys here?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, basically, so they gave us this information, right? So I substituted that into the, the equation, and I get this when I substitute that into the equation. But that would be like, that's step number one. Step number one, this is like step number two, and this is step number three. Um, step number four would probably be, I think the best way to do it, like, is not how I did it here. So the best way to do it is like, okay, recognize that it's gonna be on the X, X Z plane, right? That's the, that's step number four, is draw the plane.
Um, and that's because phi is equal to zero, right?
And it's because phi is equal to zero, right? So the, the r, A r is directly along the X axis.
Ah, okay.
That's why, that's why r kind of acts like X. Uh, uh, phi, I should say phi, because it's an integral. So phi kind of acts like X here.
Okay.
Because it's directly along the X. Um, and so then z is your Y variable, so you'd probably rearrange this into z plus or minus sixty-four, eight over root y, oh, root phi. Um, and then you just choose points to plot it.
Okay.
And you get, you get, you get two, right? Because plus or minus, so you get the top and the bottom.
Okay, because I, I, the only thing I was missing was um, why I was on the z and x plane. Gotcha.
Yeah, yeah, so it's exactly, it's because, it's because phi is equal to zero. So that's the kind of plane that's gonna be on.
Cool, thank you.
No problem. Um, okay. Any other questions? Feel free. Now I can hear? Which is good. That would be great in the recording, just me talking right over you. It would be fantastic. Really makes me look good. Um, anyway, so uh, I was just finishing up here, so I just wanna, you know, get all this working. So this is sine theta e theta. Uh, and then this is just d r r squared times two pi. And then the integral of sine theta, e theta is um, negative cos. So this is uh, negative cos theta evaluated from zero to pi. Cosine zero is one, okay, so this is actually something, so d r r squared times two pi. Cosine zero is one, so negative one minus uh, negative cosine pi. Cosine pi is uh, negative one. Uh, do I have enough brackets here? Now I do. So this is going to be d r r squared two pi, negative one minus negative negative one, under brackets. d r r squared two pi, negative one minus one. So this is negative two. So I get d r r squared two pi times negative two? That's weird. Why did I get a negative? Did I lose the negative sign somewhere? I should get, I, I should get this, which I'm very close to getting. Just to be clear, this is not a factor of r's, d r. Um, why did I get negative two? Sorry, that's weird. Did I mess up something here?
Uh, you put a pi instead of zero. On that line right there.
Which, on here?
Yep.
But it's, I'm substituting in zero, so the full thing would be, the full thing would be negative cosine zero minus negative cosine pi. So then that's, let me rewrite these lines here. This would be cosine zero is one, so this is negative one, minus cosine uh, negative one. Cosine pi is negative one. This is negative one minus negative one. This is zero, so I get zero. That's not good. There's a pi I'm missing here. Uh, what happened? Zero. Is this supposed to go from?
I think you're doing it backwards. It should be negative cosine pi minus cosine zero.
Oh, I'm doing it backwards. Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, 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 okay. Okay, makes sense. So this is cosine pi, because you do it at the top bound first. Makes sense. This is negative, negative one minus cosine or plus cosine zero, which is one plus one, which is two, whoa, d r four pi r squared. Perfect, thank you. Yes, that is right. Um, so we made it. I mean, I knew that's what it was gonna be. It's always gonna be that for a sphere, but it's good to know why. So there you go. That's what it is, and that's why. Um, but if you know this, you can just substitute it in right away. So this is d r four pi r squared. Uh, and rho V, this, d V, well, um, rho V is a constant, right? We, we, it's a uniform field, so it's rho V integral of V d V. Right? So now, what is this? In rho, integral of V d V is just the volume, right? So what's the volume of this? Well, this is this is some radius in here, which is r prime, I'll call it. But I can't call it r prime, because we use that, so r one. Um, and so the volume of this is gonna be four over three, uh, what's the volume of a sphere again? Four over three pi r cubed, I'm pretty sure. Uh, is that the volume of a sphere? I forget. It's, it's probably something like that.
Yep, it is.
Okay, there you go. Four over three, thank you. Pi r cubed, right? R one, but whatever, just r. Um, d r four pi r squared. So d r is rho V four over three pi r cubed over four pi r squared. Pi and pi and four and four cancel, and r squared and r cubed cancel. We have rho V r over three. That, right? Yeah, that's. Um, and just to make it a vector, this is the r component, so it's rho V r over three A r. There we go. So that is the flux density in there. And then, what did it ask for, actually, the question? Define, it just asked for the flux density, so there you go. Then for, just make it purple or something, uh, then for r greater than three, right? It's, we use Gauss's law again, right? Which is the flux density d S is equal to Q enclosed, right? Which now is equal to, right, the integral, well, it's not actually the integral. Um, it's not the integral of the entire Gaussian surface, right? Like, that's not the total well, sorry, let me, let me just be clear. This is the integral of rho V d V V, but this V is not the volume of the entire surface, right? Because um, uh, from here to here, right, from, so if, if our new Gaussian surface is like out here somewhere, right, there's no charge, there's no charge in this little gap. So you just count what's in here. So it's really just Q total. This is just Q total. Right? Um, so anyway, so this is gonna be the same thing, d r four pi r squared uh, is equal to, well, what's the total charge? The total charge is gonna be rho V times the volume of the sphere, which we know has a radius of three. So it's gonna be four over three pi times three. Right? That's, that's good, that's the actual volume. That's the actual volume uh, of the uh, of the sphere. Uh, so this is rho V, uh, so four times nine is thirty-six, so thirty-six rho V pi. Probably not the best way to write it, but that's how I wrote it. Uh, so that's d r. Well, d r four pi r squared is that. Uh, pi and pi cancel and divide by four, divide by four. Uh, so uh, this is d r equals thirty-six divided by four is um, nine rho V over r squared. And then finally, to make it a vector, d is nine rho V over r squared A r. There you go. Um, so that's it. That's the flux density at two different points. Then, this is the rest, that's not the whole question, the more of the questions. So find E everywhere. So for E everywhere, we need E when r is less than three, right? So this is uh, E, of course, is epsilon uh, d over epsilon naught, right? Uh, yeah, d over epsilon naught. Um, so uh, we just basically, we do that. That's, that's what we do. So we take this and divide it by epsilon naught. Rho V r over epsilon, epsilon naught, three epsilon. A r. And then if r is uh, greater than three, same thing. We just take our results from this and then uh, divide it by epsilon. Nine rho V over epsilon uh, r squared epsilon. A bit. And then it says plot the magnitude of E versus phi. So, or versus r, not phi. So this is our phi axis, oh, I keep saying phi. It's our r axis. This is our magnitude of E axis, and this is r equals three. So from, we just have, basically just have to look at what kind of function this is with respect to r. So with respect to r, it's linear, because these are constants, right? The magnitude. So uh, it's just a linear function. Up to some point, that point right there is rho V over epsilon naught, right? Because setting r equal to three, rho V over epsilon naught. And then for after this, well, again, with respect to r, what kind of function is it? Well, it's a, it's a rational function. r squared, I mean, it just kind of looks like this. Right? You get some sort of asymptote like this, and yeah, I guess if you want to write proportional to one over r squared, proportional to r here. And that's it, that's fine. Any questions? Feel free to let me know. Otherwise, I'll just go on. Uh, number four is V at r equals, r is greater than three and r is less than three. So this is, this is pretty good. So, copy it down. So uh, here, we want, we have our sphere of charge, right? We have our sphere of charge. Inside here, it's rho V. Outside, it's nothing. So the potential at a point is the amount of, is, is the potential energy or the work done to take it from reference zero, which is infinitely far away, infinitely far away, right, to that point. So let's start, let's start with r is greater than three, right? So if it's to a point like here, right, pretty much how much work does it take to get it to this point, right? Well, it's the reference reference potential plus the work done, right? Reference potential is zero, so it's just the work done, just the work done to get it here. Um, so yeah, so we just worked, we just worked that out. Um, so V uh, V is equal to uh, what is it again? Negative, what is it? Negative integral of E dot d L? Like that? Do I have the formula right? Yeah, d L. Um, yeah, that's basically it. So uh, like, we, we just worked that out. We know, we know the electric field outside, right? We know the electric field is, this is the electric field outside. And I'm gonna integrate that, well, negative of it, uh, with respect to um, well, d L. So let's see here. So E, what's d L gonna be? What path is it taking? So it's taking a path from infinitely far away to this point. Uh, we can assume it's gonna be just going straight, because strating, straight from infinite, infinitely far away to here. Um, and so all that's really changing is, is r, right? The rate, the, the angle's not changing. It's not an arbitrary path, right? It's, it's going straight from here to the origin. So this is d r. Uh, and everything else has to, it's relatively simple. R, oh yeah, r is going from infinity to r. Like, I can't integrate with respect to r, but I'll say, what does he do? He just says r. A little bit sloppy, like, they are not, or something like this here, right? This is some, this is some radius r naught away. Um, so V equals, so this is negative integral infinity to r naught. The electric field is this, right? Oh yeah, sorry, just to be clear. This is that. E is that. Uh, this is d r A r, right? So this is dotting with d r A r, right? And so we can just kind of forget about the ARs, right? Because the dot product is just the magnitude. The magnitude. Um, so yeah, so this is just negative integral infinity to r naught of nine rho V over r squared epsilon naught uh, d r. Almost everything's a constant here, so we can just negative integral infinity to r naught. Almost everything's a constant here. So we can just negative integral infinity to r naught. Uh, but this is nine rho v over epsilon naught. One over r squared, or I'll maybe I'll put the negative inside just to get a little, little simpler. Dr. So this is just, of course, one over r squared. So nine rho v over epsilon naught, epsilon. Uh, one over r evaluated from infinity to r naught. So one over r naught, right? So nine rho v over eps, uh, r naught, eps, epsilon. Calling it r naught is, doesn't really matter. Like, this is what I call this distance here. You can call it r, though. You want us to say as a function of r, then it would be nine rho v over r epsilon naught. And this is true when r is greater than three. Yeah, makes sense. But what about, so that's for there. But what about when r is less than three? Right? When your radius is less than three, that means you're inside the circle, right? So you're taking some charge from infinitely far away to a point here, right? Well, there's two different electric fields, right? There's an electric field out here and there's an electric field here. So you got to account for that, that there's two. So basically you think of it like you're finding the potential here to get to here, right? This is, this is a radius of three here. And then you want to figure out what is the potential to get it from here to here. In that, it's kind of two steps. But we can find the potential here pretty easily. This is just v of three. Equals there. Um, this would just be nine rho v over three epsilon, epsilon naught, which is just um, three rho v over epsilon naught. But that's the, that's the potential right there. And so then to figure out the potential here at this r, right? So maybe I'll call this r naught again. Different r naught. Define, define the potential at r naught, right? Well, you need to, need to integrate, you know, from uh, it's still the integral from, from infinity to r naught of e dr, but you break this into two parts, right? You break this into um, the integral from infinity to three of e dr plus the integral from three to r naught of e dr. But the thing is, is that e changes at three, right? Um, but anyway, so this, this is just that, v of three. So this is going to be three rho v over epsilon naught plus the integral from three to r naught of e dr. Um, so similarly, dr is still very like, is in the radial direction. So you can just basically get rid of the vectors. Um, and then now this integral, this e is different though, right? That's the thing. This e is different. So this is going to be integral from three to r naught of that dr plus three rho v over epsilon naught. Um, and now integrating this, not too bad, right? So it's just going to be rho v over three epsilon naught. And then what's left inside is r. So r squared over two evaluated from three to r naught plus three rho v over epsilon. Um, is that right? Yeah, that's right. So then from here, yeah, that makes sense. So from here, uh, it's just uh, rho v over three epsilon naught. You put r naught in, so r naught squared over two minus nine over two plus three rho v epsilon. Did he simplify more than that? Um, r squared over six. Did you do it wrong again? No, you put the top one in first and you subtract the bottom. And that's I can't tell. It's hard to see. My solution is the same or not? This should be nine over three, which is fine. Then this would be, I can factor out a rho v. So rho v over three epsilon naught. Factoring that out, I just have r squared over two minus nine over two plus nine. Right? Yeah, I can do that. But that's not what he has. Rv over three epsilon naught. Yeah, I made some mistake somewhere. Is this four point five? Yeah, there's some mistakes somewhere. But let's see what happened. Um, or he made a mistake. That's also, that's also a possibility. Um, uh, this is right. Like, everything's right here. So not three over eps, rho v epsilon naught. Then this is the integral from three to r. Ne, oh, oh. Negative integral. Negative integral. Negative integral. Uh, but so, so that is that, but minus, minus, minus. But how does he not have? Uh, minus, minus. Yeah, that, that, this is weird, but let me get rid of this. At least the minus is dealt with. But what am I doing wrong here? So his, his solution does this. But that, that's right. And then take out the half rho v over six epsilon naught. R naught squared minus nine plus, well, you would do nine Oh no, this is fine. I don't, I don't need this. This is just three. And then this is three rho v over epsilon naught. And then you factor out rho v over epsilon naught. So you have negative r squared over six plus nine over six plus three times rho v over six. No, 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 six. Rho v over epsilon naught. Oh, and then nine over six plus three over one is probably nine over two. Eighteen over that doesn't make sense. But rho v epsilon naught negative r squared over six. Oh, my calculator. I had to do by hand. Nine over six plus multiplied by six. They have eighteen over six, which is twenty seven over six. Which is same thing as nine over two. Yes. Rho v epsilon naught, negative r squared over six plus nine over two. I don't know why. My, I just simplified wrong. I don't know how I simplified wrong. I answered with right. I probably could have, you probably could end here. Probably could end here. Good enough. Um, but uh, yeah, anyways, that's fine. Actually, you definitely could end here because you can tell it's a poly, you can tell it's a quadratic. That's all that really matters. You can tell it's a quadratic. Um, so yeah. With respect to r. So then finally, v of r for r less than three is going to be rho v over epsilon naught. Uh, r's negative r squared over six plus nine over two. There you go. That is the solution. So yeah. And the last thing is just plotted, I'm pretty sure, right? Plot v versus r. So plotting v versus r. Da, 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 da. E r, the break is a three, right? So if r is less than three, we have a downward facing parabola. Um, so I, he drew it weird. I didn't, in his solution, like, yeah, he, he drew it weird, to be honest. Like, I don't really know what's up with that. Um, but for uh, r equal to zero, right? If r was zero in this formula, then it would just be nine rho v over two epsilon naught, right? Yeah, nine rho v over two epsilon. And then from there, it's like a parabola that's facing down. So it's like, like this, basically, like, kind of curved down like that. But anyways, and then at three, we know at three, it is, uh, what did we say at three? Where, where are we? At, at three. I lost my place. There you go. At three, it's three rho v over epsilon naught, right? Which is three. So this is four point five. So it's going to be about here. So at three, it's going to be like there somewhere and it's a downward facing parabola from here to here. So like, I would draw it like that. I don't, I don't really know. It's definitely not this. Parabolas don't look like that. Um, I think it's, but I, I don't think that's like an issue with understanding. I think that's just an issue with drawing. It's a downward facing parabola. Um, anyways, and then afterwards, uh, when r is greater than three, it's rational function r in the denominator. So it's just going to look kind of like this after. And there we go. And so yeah, at that point, it's uh, rho v three, three rho v over epsilon. Okay. There we go. Okay, so any questions with this one? Good. Have some water. And we will do our last question. So our last question is um, uh, question three. Uh, there's a lot of his writing, so I'm going to again, try to avoid it. Just, just the question is all I want to get. So question three, uh, we have some uniform distribution rho l, which is some constant, right? Distributed on rho equals four. Phi goes from zero to pi over four and z equals zero. So uh, find e at zero, zero h. Of course, first let's draw a little picture of what's happening here, right? So here is our z axis. Here's our x axis. Here's our y axis. And so we want to um, find uh, we want to just draw this little picture. So rho equals four, phi goes from zero to pi over four. That's forty five degrees, right? So that, that's where phi ends up. And z equals zero. So it's on this plane. But that's kind of the, that's kind of the piece we have here. Looks like this, a curve. Right? Also, that's what his drawing is, but yeah. So yeah, to, to draw everything in here, right? We probably wanted to say rho equals four. We probably want to say that phi equals pi over four. And we probably also want to say, I don't know, does that equal zero somewhere? Um, and then we also probably want to put the point that we're trying to find e at, so zero, zero h, right? And then finally, we want to um, uh, show the differential length. The differential length dl, right? Dl vector is just going to be, well, what are the two things changing? Only phi, right? So if this is in cylindrical, the, the differential length is phi d a rho d phi as a vector? Oh, there's no vector, right? Yeah, it's written as a vector on the solution. I don't think that's Yeah, it would just be rho d phi. Of course, prime, you know, prime. Rho prime, 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 referring to the source, right? Um, so this is four d phi. That is our dl. Um, so now that we know all this, find e there, right? So we're gonna have to use Coulomb's law for this because there's no other way that we know of. So e uh, is the integral over the, the length of rho l. I forget the formula, but whatever. R minus r prime over uh, four pi epsilon naught magnitude of rho minus, r minus r prime cubed dl prime. So uh, we just solved this integral now, right? So the electric field, uh, sorry, to solve this integral, we need to have r. We need to have r prime. And we need to have r minus r prime. And we also need to have the magnitude of r minus r prime. So r, which is our position vector, is just h a z. R prime, which is our position vector for the source, is just going to be um, uh, four a rho. That's it, four a rho, right? Cause you don't include the angle ever in position. So in cylindrical, you don't include the phi term. And in spherical, you don't include the phi or the theta term. Um, and z is zero. So we just r minus r prime, right? R minus r prime is uh, um, would be h a z minus four a rho. And the magnitude of this would be uh, h squared minus or plus um, negative four squared to the one half. So we are now ready to plug all this into the formula. So the formula, uh, rho l is a constant. Rho l is a constant. Four pi epsilon naught is a constant. So integrate over l. Um, r minus r prime, we already said is h a z minus four a rho. And then uh, magnitude of this is just going to be um, h squared plus uh, well, negative four squared, so sixteen to the three over two. That makes sense? Yeah, that makes uh, dl prime. Dl prime, though, we already know is four d phi. I was called d phi. Call it d phi prime, but yeah, d phi prime. I guess you're supposed to call it. What does he call it? Yeah, he calls it d phi prime the whole time. So I'll call it d. Um, great. A lot going on. So we break this up into two integrals. But before we do that, we can take out the uh, the denominator. So four pi epsilon naught. Uh, absolute, well, sorry, that doesn't have the absolute values. Round brackets now. H squared plus sixteen to the three over two. Now we integrate over l, right? So integrating over l, phi goes from zero to pi over four. Of zero to pi over four of h a z minus four a rho d. Oh, and then multiply this by four as well, right? So I put four there. Uh, d phi. Four and four cancel. So rho l over pi epsilon naught, h squared plus sixteen to the three over two. Um, break this into two integrals now. We, we have to. Um, so it's going to be uh, h a z integral zero to pi over four uh, d phi. Um, prime. So a z can come out of the integral because a z does not, is not a function of phi. But that's not true about this other integral, right? Which is, is also from zero to power four. And here, the a rho cannot come out of the integral. Right? Because a rho as a vector, right? A rho is the direction, the radial direction, right? It's pointing out from your x y plane, pointing out from here, right? But that direction depends on phi, right? So you can't, it, it's not independent of phi. So you, you have to take it, you cannot take it out of the integral. I mean, it's not just a constant with respect to phi. As phi changes, this vector changes, so. Um, okay, so let's try uh, to integrate all this, right? So here we have uh, same, I'm, I'm not going to copy this the whole time. So this is same thing as before. And then here, uh, h a z blah, 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 blah is h a z, zero to power four is just pi over four, right? Minus four times this integral, right? So this integral is like, you guys just, you gotta work it out, basically. Um, bad way to phrase it, but you, you gotta work at everything. Um, I forgot the formula now, but there's them formula. I, I don't have it on my form sheet, so I better find it. Um, one of you knows the formula. Let me know. Otherwise, I will, I will just find. Um, so you want to convert a rho into, well, it's not that hard. A rho, this is a rho, right? From the x axis, this is phi. This is phi. This is Y axis. So you convert this into Cartesian, right? So the Cartesian coordinates of this, this is a length rho. So X is equal to, so. A rho, oh, so this is length of one, right? Length of one. So A rho is just going to be the X component. The A X component is just going to be uh, cosine phi. And the Y component, A Y, is just going to be sine. Um, so that's the formula. It's not, not super hard to derive. There. It's one because it's a unit vector. And then you just, each component, so the X component. Yeah. Okay, so. We use this formula because it's much easier to work with. I mean, it's just possible to work with. So pi over four. So now I'm going to put in uh, cosine phi. A X plus, well. Minus four, I'm just going to immediately break up the integral. Or pi over four, uh, sine phi A Y or A Y. Uh, sorry, and then here is, here is D phi prime, D phi prime. So now these are constants with respect to. Phi. A, A X and A Z are constants with respect to phi. Those vectors never change, but A R does change. Always. Well, as theta change. A squared plus sixteen to the three over two. Here, we just have H pi over four A Z. Mine, this is the lower subscript Z, minus, uh, I, I think the four. I don't know why, I don't know why I distributed that. Um. And then here, well, we just have integral of cosine is sine. So it's going to be sine. Pi, pi over four minus sine. Zero. Um, A X though, right? A X is still there. Um, and then, okay, I guess I put the minus four back. And then this is integral of sine is negative cos. So negative cosine pi over four. Minus negative cosine zero. Um. But, um. Do I have enough brackets? Yes, I do. But A Y is still there, right? A. A Y is still. It's a little bit. Um, so anyways, this is rho L over pi epsilon naught, H squared plus sixteen to the three over two. Uh, H pi over four A Z. Um. Sine pi over four is root two over two. I, I don't know. Is um. Root two over two, root two over two minus zero. So this is four minus four root two over two. A X. Um. Cosine pi over four. Is also. Root two over two, right? Or maybe I'm wrong? No. Cosine pi over four is root two over two. Um, so negative root two over two plus one. So negative four times negative. Root two over two plus one. So plus two over two, but whatever, plus one. A Y. Um. Yeah, I mean, that's. That's about as simplified as I can make it. Uh. Which is not very nice, but it is true. It is about as simplified we can make it. We've done all the integrals. Let's see what his answer is. So that's question one. So question three is, yeah, this is where he leaves it. He leaves it at rho L, pi epsilon naught, H squared plus sixteen, three over two. Then inside the bracket. And inside the bracket, there is H pi over four A Z. There is a negative four factored out, and otherwise it's root two over two A X minus root two over two. A Y plus A Y. Yeah, that's where he leaves it, basically. He leaves it here. So that is your, that is your um. Electric field right there. Yeah. Um. Part B of this question. Or whatever, the, the second part question. Is if H is going to infinity, approximate E. Right? So you could try to take the limit. You could, um, is what's happening here. But basically, as H goes to infinity, right? Our configuration here, this is, this is what it looked like, right? It was this little, that's what the piece looked like. If H goes to infinity, then it's approximately the same thing. As you have, here's your point, zero, zero, H. And you approximately just have a point charge at the origin. Right? Like, it's not actually at the origin, but it's pretty close. And if H goes to infinity, then the difference doesn't really matter. Uh, so yeah, you basically just have a point charge at the origin. We know how to deal with that. So if we want the electric field. Right? The electric field is just going to be um, uh, I forget the formula, but. Yeah, it's just Q over four pi epsilon naught. Um. Why each square? Oh, yeah, pi R squared A R, right? That's the formula for the point, a point charge, like the electric field away from a point charge. But what is R? R is how far away it is. So that distance is R. H equals R. Um, and A R is A Z, right? Because it's the pointy straight up. Right? So for us, this is epsilon naught, uh, electric field is Q over four pi epsilon naught, H squared A Z. Q is just the total charge, right? So Q is equal to the inter- the, the line integral. Um, or yeah, the line integral of rho V D L. Over the line. Right? That's, that's all it is. Um, so this is just going to be uh, the integral from zero to pi over four. Rho L can come out, right? It's a, it's a, uh, not rho V, rho L. Rho L is just a constant, the uniform distribution. And then D L, we already discussed, is four D phi, right? Uh, so this is rho L. Four rho L times pi over four. Which is just pi rho L. So altogether, pi and pi will cancel. So we have rho L over four epsilon naught, H squared A Z. And this is approximately true as H gets bigger and bigger. And yeah. Yep, that, 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 basically. Uh, next part of the question. Um, next part of the question is. Oops. Next part of the question is charging closed with a spherical surface. What's the charge enclosed with a spherical surface of that, right? So uh, if this is our configuration. This radius is three, I think it was, four. Now imagine we have a spherical surface that's bigger. Well, it would enclo- enclose all the charge, right? So Q enclosed would equal Q total. Would equal rho V pi. We already discussed that. That would be the total charge. That's what we, that's what we're calculating here, Q total. Really simple part. And then the last part. Is this. So the last part is. E, find the electric field if instead it was that integral, right? The same, like, the integral. Uh, find E if line was that. E at this point, zero, zero, eight. So we're not going to redo the whole thing. Uh, we're basically just gonna, everything's gonna be the same up until here, right? Uh, all the changes at the bounds, right? So maybe I'll, maybe I'll like start here. For this part, like, that would be the electric field, but instead of zero to pi over four, it'd be zero to two pi. I'm going to skip a bunch of steps because I don't want to write it again. This is identical, though, like identical to this part. Um, yeah, identical to here. Or actually, I can even stop here. Um, and this is just pi, a two pi. And this is just two pi. Um, and this integral is zero. That's the only difference. This integral is zero. The way I like to think about what's happening here is we're doing integral of A rho zero to pi D phi. So what that means is A rho, right, is on our X Y plane. A rho is varying from, phi is varying, phi is this angle. So it's going from zero to two pi, right? So it's kind of like this. This is what's happening. And you're adding up all these vectors and averaging it kind of, right? So I like to think about like the direction. Like, the direction that the resulting vector is going to point is the average direction of all these vectors. So for example, if we were integrating from zero to pi over two, right? That means you can kind of imagine it like, you can kind of imagine it like this. Like, these are the, that's what's happening, right? And i- it's true, like, the, the average direction is, is this, and that is the direction that this. Um. A rho. D phi. Uh. The, the results would point in this direction, the average direction that all these arrows are pointing. Um, so what's the average direction here? Zero. There isn't, like, the average direction is the origin. Um, so that integral is zero. You don't have to work it out. Like, the math will work out. So not five, zero. The math will work out if you do the same formula like uh, this guy, right? It'll work out. But I, I like to just do a little quick thing like that. That's my, that's my reasoning why that's zero there. Now that that's zero, the rest of this is a lot easier. So rho L over pi epsilon naught. H squared plus sixteen to the three over two. And then we just have two pi H A Z. Um. And whatever, I mean, sure, some things can cancel here. I don't know. Rho L H over epsilon naught, two, uh, epsilon naught. Um, H squared plus sixteen to the three over two A. Probably. Oh, he had a four in the denominator, what? How did he get a? Four? What? Oh, no, that doesn't make sense. He did something wrong. Yeah. So it's not me. That. That should be, it's not me, right? This found. Phi goes from zero to pi. So how would it, how is it possible that he got pi over four here? That's not possible. He got pi over four. That's supposed to be two pi. And then everything would work. Well, just. Yeah. Maybe I'll email him and ask those two, those two corrections. But there's one error I found here and one error at the start. I think this is right. This should be correct. But anyways, that's uh, that's that. That's uh, that's the problem. And yeah, that's everything I wanted to cover today. I mean, I just wanted to try those four questions because that's what he said with the exam would be like. So make sure we know how to do them. Um, took, took an hour and forty three minutes to go through all of them. So uh, that's that. But yeah, I mean, otherwise, I am done for today. Uh. Let me know if you guys have any more questions. I will stop recording.